Hello everyone, it's Jerry at The Fledge. Welcome to another episode of Every Damn Day. And today I'm broadcasting from the sanctuary with the art and the lights and the, I don't know if you can see the plants behind us, still giving away seeds if anybody needs some. And today I'm wearing my headset as usual, brown hair, brown eyes. I've got a Jason Alarm t-shirt on. And Jason Alarm was a local band here until, I don't know, a couple of years ago, I think is when they broke up. But always supporting our locals. And speaking of locals, today we've got our new friend, Clarita. How you doing, Clarita?
Hi, I'm good.
Yeah, so you're saving me a little bit today. My guest dropped out and you were scheduled for a later date. But we both thought it might be a good idea to do it earlier. So thank you for that.
No problem.
Yeah, so let's jump into you. Tell us about you. Where were you born and raised? Where'd you go to school? All of that stuff.
Okay, so I was born in Chicago and I was raised in a suburb outside of Chicago. It's a black suburb. It's about 15 minutes outside of Chicago called Hazelcrest. If you're not from the area, you probably have no idea of the place that I am speaking of. But I went to school there for elementary and everything. The elementary school I went to was called, well, actually I went to, first I went to PAC. Then I went to Chateau. Then I went to Prairie Hills, which is part of PAC, which if you know the area, people know what I'm talking about. But, and then I went to Hillcrest High School. And that is where I graduated. And afterwards, I went to Michigan State. I did not have enough money to go to school at Michigan State. So I ended up joining the Army. And when I was going to go back to school, I met this boy and he was really cute. And he was in the Navy, so I married him. And then I said, if you want to marry me, that's cool, but you have to promise that you'll move with me to Michigan so I can finish school. And he said, yeah. So we moved to Michigan. And then, oh, I can't see you. Oh, there you are. So we moved to Michigan and then the kids, then we had kids. Yeah, so we bought a house and we had kids. And then we were gonna come back to Chicago. And then we realized that Lansing had changed us in a good way. And that we liked being that way. And we didn't want to go back to the way we were. So we live in Lansing.
That, that is an awesome journey to Lansing. I like that a lot. How many kids do you have? Do you mind if I ask?
No, I don't mind. I have five children. My oldest is 15 and she goes to Eastern. The next one is 14 and she goes to Eastern. And then the last three, the one who's 12, and then the six and the seven year old, they go to Post Oak in the Girl Spent area.
All right, so Eastsiders, is that true?
No. You know what's crazy? So all my friends live on the East Side. And I kept trying to find a house on the East Side, but I need a big house. And the houses on the East Side are not big. And so I'm kind of sad. I always wanted to live on the East Side. But I kind of live right in the middle of the city, which is actually really good. Because I'm 10 minutes away from everything. It's awesome. So I have gotten spoiled and I hate when I have to drive 20 minutes. Like I'm like, oh, that's so far away. 20 minutes? That's all the way in Hope. That's all the way in Haslam. But I'm right in the middle, like Martin Luther King. And so I have easy access to everything.
Well, 20 minutes in Chicago is about 10 blocks, right? Is that one of the-
It's so funny. 20 minutes is like not far at all. It's so funny. I'm getting so spoiled. So spoiled. Now when I come, you know, to visit my parents, I'm like confused because I'm all like, wait, we gotta, it's gonna take an hour to get there? I don't want to drive. You can drive.
So tell us about your degrees at MSU. Oh, first of all, glad you're raising Quakers. I'm a Quaker too. My grandmother was a Quaker. So a lot of Lansing Eastern on this side. Yeah, so tell us about your degrees-
I'm always so impressed by that.
That it's such an old school, you mean?
Yeah, well, not even just that it's an old school, that the way the culture is in Lansing is just so unusual to me because of where I'm from. People don't usually have like years and years of going to the same school. And like this pride that you guys have about where you live is like, whoa. Because where I come from, a lot of times people are like, oh, I gotta get out of here. You know what I mean? But in Lansing, a lot of people are like, I love it here. You know, we just gotta make it better. And I love that whole attitude.
Yeah, I like that too. I promote that attitude as much as I can. Because, you know, the grass is always greener until you get to the other place. And then you start missing home. And that's okay too. We all gotta go out and explore. But seems like a lot of people come back. Sort of like you.
Yeah, I hope that's true because I don't want my, my kids to leave. I, I'm like, dude, I know that my kids have like, it's so funny. They have big city aspirations. And we're like, dude, we took you out of the big city on purpose. Like, you know, we're like, we want you to have a good Midwestern upbringing. And then I guess if you want to go to Hollywood, you could do that for a little bit and then come back. And they're all like, you gotta go out of Lansing. I want to go to Europe. And I'm just like, but Lansing's so nice.
Yeah, I had, my daughter went to Loyola for a year on the North Side. And now she's moving to, she's graduating from MSU. But she's moving to LA in the summer for a little while.
Oh, man. I, I always get nervous when people leave. Like they're like, ah, they might not come back.
Nah, she'll be back. So-
Well, you see what happened to me. I went to MSU for college and now like I have a whole life.
Yeah, you give me hope that she'll be back too.
Yeah.
So what were your, what did you study at MSU?
So I studied political science and elementary education. So interesting thing, when I first got into MSU, I actually wanted to be pre-med. And so I was in the Rosa's program, which was the residential option for science and engineering students at MSU. And when I, that summer before I came to college, we would watch a lot of TLC. And on TLC, you know, they, they're known for showing all these like, like births and things like that. Like back then, you know, now it's not so graphic compared to the things you get to see now. But back in the early, like the early 2000s, late 90s, TLC had like some graphic type stuff compared to everything else. And I would get grossed out. And my friends are like, you can't be a doctor if like you don't like blood and guts. And I'm like, oh, man, I guess I picked the wrong like major. And so while I was at MSU, I joined this group called EM rule. And that's the multiracial unity and living experience. Oh my gosh, it changed my life. And then I was like, I have to go into politics. But that's not what happened. I ended up like getting married and having kids and like being, you know, oh, PTA, oh, dance. Oh, we gotta do football. And, but I ended up going back to looking into medical stuff. When I realized how good of a career being a firefighter EMT is, which is what I am now. But recently, just some things have been happening that I didn't like in the city. And so I kind of like was like, maybe I should put my political hat on, you know?
Yeah, well, before we get into that, you're, you're an EMT in Windsor Township, right? Is that true?
Yes. Yep. And an MMR in Lansing too.
Oh, okay. And so going into politics, that's, that's a good way for us to transition to telling us about the projects that you're working on. Why don't you let everyone know that, what you're a candidate for?
Okay, so I'm a candidate, a candidate for city council, the at-large position. Um, yeah, it was not really, I mean, I had been thinking about it for a long time. But I didn't feel like I had the support I needed. And then some people started letting me know. They're like, no, you should run. You should run. And I'm like, okay, if I have the support, I'll do it. And it turned out like I have a lot of support from my friends and neighbors. And I'm really surprised that they are like behind me.
Oh, that's awesome. What have you done so far? I know that you filed and announced. What else is going on in your kind of campaign? Do you have a website or Facebook or anything?
So, yeah, well, so a lot of that stuff is in the early stages and I don't want to rush it. I wanted to be very careful about how I present myself to people who have never met me. I do have a regular Facebook page and people can come and talk to me on there. But I do have a website coming. I do have a Facebook page coming. I just want to be very careful about how I do all that. I want to do it the right way. I don't want to just throw it together. But yeah, you can follow me on Twitter. I'm at Twitter at Clarita for Lansing and Instagram at Clarita for Lansing. And just Facebook is just Clarita Duckett Freeman. But I'm sure a page will be coming soon because I've been working on it.
All right, we will be watching for that and we'll update the comments and stuff like that when we see it to put it under the show. Okay?
Okay.
So, you know, some of the things whenever I, I hear someone wants to be a candidate, the first thing that kind of pops in my mind is why? So what was your why moment or your, your kind of moment where you said, I have to get in? Was it a particular issue? Was it, is, do you want to talk about that?
I could talk about it. I could talk about it. So what happened was, well, first there, Black Lives Matter had a forum. You know, they've been having quite a few forums for the community to be able to speak. And they asked Kathy Dunbar, and actually a few different times about defunding the police. And her response really frustrated me because she said something to the effect of, okay, well, I, I agree with like, you know, some money should, you know, leave police and go to community. But then what do we do about public safety? And I almost got enraged because I'm so tired of, of hearing people say, well, what are we gonna do about public safety? You know, in some places in the United States, they have miles and miles of area and they have one cop. And they have the same crimes that we have happen in Lansing. Because police are not the ones who stop crime. What stops crime is how we invest in our people. So what I said to her was, I said, you don't have the imagination to think about defunding the police, which is fine. But if you don't, then you need to hire people who do. And you need, or you need to let people lead who do have that kind of imagination. Because you do need to have the imagination to basically imagine a world where everything isn't so violent and you're not controlling of people. Like you gotta think about, how can I love people? How can I take care of people? Why we always want to think about, well, how can I punish somebody? How can I control them? Because that's basically what police are. And it's, the thing is historically in the United States, police were slave catchers. Like they literally evolved from slave catchers. So for me, they don't have a place in a world where you're looking for peace and love. But I understand that we gotta have them in the interim, right? But I don't want to think about the interim as much as I want to think about the future. I want to think about the future being positive and good. And I want to think about like, well, if you could imagine Lansing to be anything and have anything, what would you imagine? And that, to me, that doesn't involve thinking about how am I gonna control people?
So one of my favorite things that Albert Einstein ever said is that imagination is more important than knowledge. Knowledge can take you so far. Imagination can take you everywhere. And I love that you're using that word instead of, well, I know this and I know that. You're just saying, I can imagine a future that is safe and peaceful and compassionate and full of love, where we don't have to commit crimes or, you know, we, we don't look at things as crimes that really aren't, shouldn't be crimes right now. I love that, that mindset that you're, you're in when you talk about that. I love the mindset that you might inspire by that.
And that's cool. And the thing is, it's not just like, yeah, I'm all about like imagining it. But also Black Lives Matter actually has a breathe act. And if you look at the breathe act, there are practical things that we can do to, to lead up to this, this time of peace and, you know, valuing people and things like that. So they're like practical things to do. So when I said she didn't have the imagination, you know, I wasn't saying as in like, okay, I have all the answers. But a lot of very smart people have put together answers. And I would encourage people to go look at the breathe act online.
Yeah, I will, I'll put that out there in a second. I, you know, diversity, inclusion, when you get a lot of brains together, your brain, your collective brain gets so much bigger and your imagination and your knowledge also grow with that. So yeah, you are speaking my language for sure. And, you know, I know that, you know, that's, that's probably a good question. You're coming in, this is your first time that you would be on city council. So there's a lot to probably learn. How would you use, how would you use the people, the outside groups to get input and to help you make decisions? How do you kind of see that path?
Well, for one, I think there should be community forums. I like, one of the things I like that Black Lives Matter does, they have the People's Assembly. That's a great place. I think that's gonna be a great place for Lansing period, to be honest. Because you can have people from all types of backgrounds come together and come up with ideas about what do they want the city to look like? How do they want the city to represent them? And everybody, you know, get rid of that hierarchy, you know, and put everybody on the same level. It's like, we're just all citizens, you know? And in the city council, it's not like that. One of the things that kind of makes me a little bit uncomfortable about politics is like, there's like people who are up here and like, if you want to be taken seriously, you gotta climb up this ladder to meet them there. And it's like, okay, we're human beings. We all have something to offer. I don't care if you have a degree or you don't have a degree. You have life experience that I haven't had. You know what I mean? So I can always learn something from someone else.
You know, the, the people that say that other thing about the ladder, they're the ones up on the top of the ladder. They're the ones that don't want to make space for others. They're the ones that are trying to protect some position that they have and discouraging people for coming up the ladder. But I, I like your mindset. I think, you know, James Bignall here said, love your perspective, Clarita. Good luck on your race. So-
Thanks.
I, I know that, that imagination, that positive, that imagination of a utopia almost is really inspiring to me. And I'm not saying that defunding the police is utopia because it's just solving a problem that we have right now. And utopias are much more than that, I think, sometimes.
Yeah.
But I see a path. I see what you're talking about, I think. So what are some other things that are important to you that you'd like to talk about as far as the city of Lansing or, or being a candidate or anything?
Well, so what I was doing before, I, I started looking into being an EMT firefighter and looking into a candidate. That just happened in the past week. So that's definitely not what I've been doing most of my life. I have a passion for women and children, especially black women and children. So a few years ago, I am one of the co-facilitators of the Black Breastfeeding Sisterhood. And I became the first black lactation counselor in the area along with my co-facilitator, Naima. And we volunteer at the Willow Tree Family Center. The Willow Tree Family Center is awesome. Every year they throw the Greater Lansing Baby Fair. And we have a lot of support groups for families because we believe in strong, healthy families. So that's basically been what I've been doing for years is, is like things for mothers and babies. I was also a coordinator for improving birth. I had a very traumatic first birth experience. And at that time, I think it was called Inglewood Regional Hospital.
It was.
Inglewood Regional. Yeah. And it was very, it was scary. And honestly, I probably would have only had two kids if I would not have discovered how wonderful midwives are. So my last four children were born with midwives. The last two were actually born in my house. And it makes it hard for me to sell the house even though I know I need to because it's too small. Because it's like, oh my goodness, I gave like birth to my babies in this house, in this bathroom, in this living room. This is like, so like precious to me now, even though my house looks like a shack. It's so precious to me. But, yeah, so right now Willow Tree has a partnership with Sparrow Hospital. And we are kind of like helping women get doulas who have substance use disorder. And we're, so the goal is that they will be able to stay with their babies longer and their babies won't have to go to the neonatal care. And there's some evidence that, that points to that. And I'm really, really excited about getting them doulas and them having that kind of support. And I really, I kind of, so in EMTs, they always talk about like, oh, it's like, don't talk about babies. Like, it's almost like a bad word if you start talking about somebody having a baby in an ambulance. But I secretly quietly, because I don't want to get beat up, but secretly quietly to myself, I'm like, please, let's have a baby today. Because I love women's bodies and giving birth. And that, for me, it's just like such a spiritual thing, like to be there. When you see somebody bring a life into the world, I just love it.
I, I, I love your passion for this. I wanna, so I had a daughter who was a heroin addict for 12 years. So she suffered from substance use disorder and ultimately died of a fentanyl overdose. Sorry, I know that's heavy.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for that. But one of our granddaughters was born while she was using. So was basically addicted herself when she was born. And that whole experience was so cold, right? Because my daughter was over here and my granddaughter was in the neonatal's room. It was at the, the hospital in Grand Rapids, the Betsy, or is it Betsy DeVos? Gross. So, yeah. So what, what exactly are you guys doing there? I'm interested to learn more. Because I think that's extremely important.
Well, so OBI gave us the grant. And so the grant gives the money to the doulas. It provides transportation in case they don't have transportation. And so the doulas will walk with them from the time that they know that they are pregnant to about six weeks or more after they have the baby, just to check in on them. So doulas do a lot of things. They're not just present for birth. Doulas can help you after birth. Like we have some doulas that specialize in postpartum doulas. So they might like, maybe help you like around the house or maybe hold the baby if you're sleepy and you need to take a nap and you're just so overwhelmed. Just things to, you know, help support mothers. In a lot of other countries, specifically, I want to say in Korea, South Korea, that's like a normal part of having a baby. Like, people don't expect you to have a baby and just pop up and just do everything. No, there's a time where people take care of you. And so that, I think that is very important. Most women in the US don't get that. That's what, we do have a postpartum group for women dealing with postpartum mood disorders. Just because it's so hard being in the US. We have horrible healthcare. And then like, nobody cares about your life and you just feel like you're so alone and struggling. And basically, that's why Willow Tree Family Center exists. So women don't have to feel like they're all alone. We made our own community.
Yeah, you said, you said something earlier about, you know, especially black and brown women and children. And, you know, as you're, as you're talking about, you know, you're in a hospital, you're, and I've, do you know Tamikaia? Her and I have, I think you probably would at least have, okay. Anyways, Tamikaia is a nurse and she delivers babies at Sparrow, I think. And she talks about, you know, if it's, if it's a white lady, it's all fragile. And hey, you need this medication and it's all comfortable. And if it's a black lady, then it's, oh, you look really tough. You look like you can take this. We're not gonna do pain management with you. Or a billion other biases that are in there. Do you see that in your work? Is that? Yeah, I already knew the answer.
That's like the tip of the iceberg. They don't, they don't believe black mothers when they say they're in pain, when they're sick, when they say they think something is wrong. They don't believe if you say everything's okay. They don't believe anything you say. It's like you, your word has no value. You can't be trusted. I actually had the opposite experience where I knew I wanted to have a natural birth. And I thought you can have a natural birth in a hospital. Why should you not be able to have a natural birth in a hospital, right? So I did my, my research. I was educated. I took my birth class. I was like, ready, ready to have a baby, right? And I got there and they tried to push drugs on me. And then they, when they saw that I knew how to deal with the pain, they would purposely try to interrupt my concentration. And it was so weird. It was just like so disrespectful. And I remember at one point, and this is the thing that people sometimes don't understand, but it doesn't matter if you're a person of color, if you're in a system that is harmful to people of color, because then you're gonna get caught up in that. So for example, one of the interns I had, the doctor, she was black. And she came in there and she said to my husband, well, you better talk to your wife. Like, he's going by what my needs and desires are. Don't try to put my husband against me. And the crazy thing is, she's the only black doctor I've ever had. And I have that bad memory in my mind of her working toward harming me instead of helping me. I thought she would have helped me, but that's not what happened.
That's, I'm, I'm sorry all of that happened to you. And I'm sorry that it continues to happen every single day. And, you know, it sounds like you have a lot of tenacity. Like when you've set your mind towards something, you're gonna get it done. Is that pretty much true? I mean, you made your new husband move back to Michigan from Chicago and-
Oh, yeah. You know what's crazy? You know, we only knew each other for three months before we got married. We've been married for 19 years this summer. And it has been a struggle because we were so young. I was 20. I remember we tried to go to a jazz club downtown Chicago and I couldn't get in because I wasn't 21. And it was so embarrassing. But yeah, I, I, so I work really hard at things that I want, even when it seems like nobody's supporting me. The great thing that I've discovered is because I fought like that, now other people saw me fight and now they're supportive of me. So like that happened with breastfeeding. I didn't know how to breastfeed. I just knew I wanted to do it. So I just did it. And I probably didn't do it right. But then people saw how like important it was to me and how I was fighting to teach other women about breastfeeding and why it's important. And then people were like, hey, you know, we're gonna, we want to start a breastfeeding group. Do you want to lead it? Do you want, you know, to, to teach us how to, you know, help black women breastfeed? And I'm like, sure. And the next thing I start seeing is that every time I say that I see a need in Lansing, people are like, okay, tell us what you need. How can we help you? And I love that. That's why I still live here. That's why I don't want to leave. I noticed that housing prices are going crazy. So I'm scared I won't be able to buy a house here. And I need a bigger house. But I'm like, I've got to figure some way because I'm not leaving Lansing. It's my place. These are my people.
All right. I, I use the phrase that Lansing raised me. My coaches, my teachers, my neighbors, the mentors I had, I, I always felt like Lansing took care of me. Watched out for me. So what would you say your mission is?
I would say my mission is to love people radically. Because that's how I want to be loved. And so I just try to think really hard, especially when people are marginalized, when they're different from me. Then I try to think like, well, if I were them, how would I want to be loved? And so I try really hard to do that.
And what do you do every damn day to push that mission forward?
I listen. I listen to what people who are different than me have to say. Especially if I know that I have more social power or capital or privilege than they do.
I, I don't even know how to respond to that answer. It is such a great answer. It is such a great answer. You know, uh, Stephen Covey, The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, one of the habits is to seek first to understand and then to be understood. And I just think it's a spectacular habit to listen. Uh, because that's how you rule. From the people up, not from everybody down, you know, or from the leaders down. So I like that a lot. We, Daisy Chade and the show's together. And yesterday on the show, I had a gentleman named Clark Anderson who owns a software company out in East Lansing. And his question to you is, if you had a magic button or a superpower where if you press the button, it would change one thing in the world, what would that thing be that you would want changed?
That everybody had healthcare. Good healthcare.
And that's, that's amazing that you answer that way because that's what he's fighting for. He's trying to get uh, uh, actually a constitutional amendment. Now, he doesn't, he doesn't think that uh, Medicare for All would be as effective as other ways of doing it, where I kind of disagree about that. I really want Medicare for All. Are you into Medicare for All too?
Oh yeah, if they do it right. They, they need to do it right. But yes, definitely.
Well, there, that might be the rub. I'm not sure they can do anything right in this system right now. So, um, tomorrow on the show, I've got a, a gentleman who uh, is named Anwar Scott. And it's Capital Consignments is his company. What would you ask, like me to ask him on your behalf?
Um, what, what does he like on his pizza?
You know, you asked that when we were preparing and I'm thinking, that is such a great question because I'm going to learn a lot about somebody. So, so let's try it. What, what do you like on your pizza?
Okay, there's two kinds of pizzas for me. Either it just has to be extra sauce and just sausage, because sausage is just delicious. It's like the most wonderful meat ever. Or it has to have everything.
So ham, pepperoni, anchovies, everything?
It's mostly about the vegetables. I need those olives and onions and peppers, like, mm. And that like with the meat, like together, so delicious.
So yeah, I think I, so I think I learned that uh, one, you're, you're not a vegetarian, right?
I know, sorry.
That's something, immediately learned that. Um, if you like the ham and everything, then you're also probably not uh, Muslim. So
No, no, I love my Muslim brothers and sisters, but I, I gotta eat the pig.
Hey, let's give a shout out for uh, everyone fasting and Ramadan.
Oh yeah.
So yeah, um, so there's two things I know. You probably eat too much of it when you get going. Because you seemed really excited about your answer. So do you eat pizza a lot?
Oh my goodness, way too much. Um, I eat pizza at least every week. Um, but I'm from Chicago and the pizza, so the pizza, the pizza in Lansing is not that great. But I'm going to tell you guys a secret. There's a pizza place in Chicago called Home Run Inn, like a real pizza place, right? Well, at the store at Meyer and Kroger, you can get some Home Run Inn. And it's almost as good as the real thing.
Ah, so that's good advice. Now, this is where you have to be really careful in your political career because you don't want to lose the, the pizza vote, right? But I'm going to put you on the spot here. Is there a place in Lansing that you do like?
You know what? People would be surprised at the place I go. And they'd be like, what? But Hungry Howie's. Hungry Howie's, because Hungry Howie's, they make the pizza the way I want it because I have to have the extra sauce. Because in Lansing, I noticed they don't put enough sauce on the pizza. You need more sauce than that, guys. You need more sauce. So Hungry Howie's and I love that butter cheese crust. Mmm, yes. And the three cheese of bread. That's my life. Three cheese of bread.
So you get elected city council, let's say, in four years, is the pizza scene going to be better?
I don't know.
I'm just playing. You got a lot of important issues to tackle and I like, I don't want to distract you with that. Um, what is happiness to you? And are you happy? I asked the question as you're in the middle of a nice laugh.
Well, I think I'm, I'm like happy like today, like, you know, in the moment. But I would be way happier if I made living wages and had healthcare. That would make me happy. I get so stressed thinking about bills and budgeting and college for kids. I hate that I have to think about money. I hate money. I seriously hate it.
Oh, I hate money too. If it's new, it cuts you. If it's dirt, or if it's old, it stinks, right? And I think that, that's from New Jack City or something like that. Um, with everything happening, with all of the social injustice that, or injustice that we see, uh, the pandemic really hurting Michigan for one, black and brown people all over the world. Uh, what gives you hope in all of this mess?
Hmm, you had to throw COVID up in there. Well, um, COVID actually makes me nervous, but um, I, my children bring me hope. When I look at my kids, I feel like they're better people than we are. Um, and like I'm surprised at how good they're turning out. Like seriously, I'd be looking at them like, dang, you awesome. So I have hope that they will make things better. They can be the scientists and figure things out. They can be the doctors and lawyers and uh, you know, they can be the EMTs and firefighters of tomorrow. And I think that they will do better than I do because they already are better than me.
You are, you are so spot on with the way I think. Uh, it's uh, it's really kind of strange, actually. So did we forget to talk about anything that you wanted to talk about?
Hmm, let me look at my list.
Let me see if I got a list too.
I don't really, I, I don't have anything. I would say this, uh, it, I think it'd be good if more people listened in on uh, city council meetings. Um, they are making a lot of decisions that people may not agree with. Um, Lansing is gentrifying and it's kind of scary to me. Because of all the things that I love best about Lansing, I'm afraid it's gonna go away. Um, so just keep your eye on people, keep them in check, hold them accountable. Um, and if I, if I get in office, hold me accountable. I would love that. I, I like to be held accountable because um, I want to make sure I'm doing right by people.
And city council is every other Monday?
It's every other Monday at uh, six.
Six?
Seven.
Uh, we're screwing everyone up now.
No, I think it's eight. I think it's six. I think it's six. Yep, I'm pretty sure it's at six. It's six, it's a six to eight-ish.
Yeah. So Google it and find the Zoom meeting and call in and do all of these things. Take your time to use your voice and speak. Um, it, it might make a difference, right?
It will make a difference.
It will make a difference. Um, so you know, usually I ask you, ask the guests to take us out with something. Was that it? Was that? I mean, that was a really good one.
Oh, it is? Well, I said this. I'm going to say, um, imagine better and believe it, and then you'll do it.
I love it. Thank you so very much for coming on the show today. Uh, I had a lot of fun. I hope you did too.
Yes. Thank you for having me.
Of course. And everyone, I'll be back on the show again tomorrow, every damn day at 2:00 PM. And we will see you later. And I don't know if we talked about this, Claretta, but stay on the phone for a second. I'm going to stop going live. Uh, but we'll talk for a bit. See y'all.